Recording in progress.
Good evening, I'm gonna call the Auburn City Council Study Session Meeting.
Deputy Mayor Riggs, I'm sorry, we have one more minute.
Oh.
I know.
Okay. I was going by your calls.
I thought it was a little fast.
That last week, last hour.
This is the start of the evening, start leaves.
Yes, I know.
You're not starting?
No, never.
Okay.
I'm gonna call the Auburn City Council Study Session Meeting scheduled for Monday, May 12th to order. Sean, could you please call, oh, first of all, public participation, Auburn City Council Study Session, scheduled for Monday, May 12th, 2025, at 5:30 PM will be held both in person and virtually. Sean, can you call roll call?
Deputy Mayor Riggs.
Here.
Councilmember Amer.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Sturgis.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Mello.
Here.
Thank you. Sean, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, Chair.
Okay, we have no announcements, reports or presentation. So I am going to turn this over to Waste Management for their presentation this evening with Director Thomas.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, I'm gonna teams over to Joan Nelson, the city's utility, uh, utility billing services manager.
Hi, Joan Nelson, thanks for having us. Today we have with us Laura Moser with Waste Management and Jason Shay, who is the district manager over at the South Sound. Uh, in the audience, we also have Han Kirkland, she is gonna be our new, um, contract person. Laura, after, I think, almost thirty years with Waste Management, is retiring this week, so Friday is her last.
Congratulations.
So, it's been a pleasure to work with her, wish her well in her future endeavors, she is moving over to the East Coast, so.
Hopefully.
With the family, yes. So we'll let him, um, this is our 2024 annual report.
Yes, thank you. There we go. So thank you for having us here today, I really appreciate the time. Uh, we always like to come, you know, once a year and give you a report of what we did last year, and so, like Joan said, this is everything about 2024. I'll try to keep it brief. Um, we, Waste Management, uh, we have commitments and values that we follow, and a little bit about that is, um, our WM team is really the foundation for the success we have. And I know Jason, um, really brings that to life with his drivers, um, and focus on safety, on servicing our customers first, on doing the right thing all the time. And, um, we're also focused on inclusion and diversity, too. So you already introduced him, so we'll keep going here. We do a lot in the Auburn community, I think one of the biggest things that we do, and Joan can talk about this more at another date, that we, um, invest back into the community, we have, we were getting a federal fuel tax every year for our compressed natural gas fuel, and we were sharing that with the city of Auburn. And, um, last year it generated thirty-three thousand four hundred and seven dollars that I know Joan and her team have been working on a really great utility assistance program in the city. Um, not sure where, where, um, like I said, Jason's really in charge of the team that gets out there every day on the street. So just some of the highlights from this year, we do our annual, uh, Christmas tree collection, those are natural Christmas trees. Um, we have seen a decrease in those, I think people are really going to the fake trees, you can just open up and the lights come on. But we still go out and do that. Um, and we were able to ratify a contract with the Teamsters Local 174 earlier last year, um, again, that Jason's in charge of implementing and managing, but that contract goes five years?
Yep.
Five years. So it, so it really secures our workforce without disruption, you know, for, for five years, and we never want disruption. Uh, I think one of the biggest things that happened last year was with King County, and, uh, they were gonna do some modification to equipment at the Algonah Transfer Station, and it started at the first part of the year, and it basically went on and off throughout, it was a lot of miles, and, um, you made it work.
Yeah, I'll speak on that, uh, I'm very proud of my team. Uh, I think, uh, it started in August of last year with the closure of Algonah, and it lasted until about, what, three weeks ago? Um, in that two times that we didn't service all the customers in the day. Um, so that's, to me, that's pretty impressive with the amount of customers you have, not resi- just residential, but commercial, and we were able to get it all off the ground. The guys put in a lot of extra hours, I think we're averaging about nineteen thousand extra miles a month. Um, so that, for all lines of business, so that really puts, you know, you're adding extra miles, extra time. These guys get tired after working eleven, twelve hours a day, every day, and they came in with a great attitude. Um, every day, we were surprised because they weren't letting the closure get them down. They knew they had pride in their job, they wanted to take care of the community, and they took pride in making sure all the customers got off the ground, which, again, re- in return for me, I love that, I, I take pride in that, too. I'm very proud of my team.
And then on top of it, you guys might remember the bomb cyclone that happened, you know, right before Thanksgiving. And I don't think it caused a lot of damage down here, it was really more up north in the Redmond area. But again, King County was, you know, trying to be helpful and opened up their transfer stations to allow people to bring in debris, which, um, kind of overran the transfer stations, and again impacted our guys trying to get out there and, you know, dump their loads. Um, and then in November, it was quite the year, um, Arda, who is a major glass recycler in Seattle, permanently closed its doors. And we, we were under contract, um, and we're s- with Strategic Glass, and we're still able to dump our glass there. I've heard recently that they are now accepting glass from all companies again. But again, we were able to, you know, continue to collect glass and to dispose of it so it could be processed. WM Street Litter Crew, this is, you know, again, this is, you know, under Jason's umbrella with operations. Uh, we were, we did litter crew work up through January of this year. And the litter crew team now is all, um, under a separate company. We don't do it any longer, but we did do it and collected quite a bit of material. Uh, just gave you some pictures there so you can see some of the things that get called, were called into us to go pick up. And, you know, again, the team really was out there trying to make everything look as good as possible. And we, we go into the 2024, our waste stream summary. We had some, some changes from twenty-three to twenty-four, I don't have them all on here, but we had some decreases in residential recycle, but overall yard waste or compost or yard plus food, I think we call it here in Auburn, um, increased, which is great. But when you look at the overall tonnage of everything, this year was down over last year, but our residential numbers were up, multifamily was down, and commercial were down. So there's just some interesting, you know, information, it follows with whatever businesses are moving in and out, you know, how many, you know, customers or people you have moving in or out, so I won't spend a lot of time on that. We do a lot of outreach, and so we have a whole separate team that does outreach that we coordinate with Joan and her staff every year. And last year we were focused on thirty-nine multifamily properties where they were, our team, our recycle for interns, were doing two visits, um, to kind of gauge, the first, to see, gosh, how much garbage do they have in the recycle? And what recycle was in the garbage? And then how do I work with the property manager to get all the right education out there? And this just kind of summarizes their first visit in July, um, and then their second visit in August, after they did some training and did their audits, and there definitely was some improvements. Uh, but as we all know, multifamily, um, is something you gotta stay on all the time because people are moving in and out a lot. Lot of common contaminants in the recycle are bag materials and plastic bags. We want everything to be loose, just, just throw it in there, no plastic bags. And then also, uh, polystyrene foam or, um, styrofoam, as it's, the trademark name is, is found in there a lot, too. And I don't know, do you, do you, does the city still do the styrofoam?
No, because we have the Recycle Right events.
There we go, thank you. Next slide. So again, we do a Recycle Right event, we do two a year, and we do collect the foam, we collect electronics, paper for shredding and textiles. And last year we held an event, uh, at Elaco Elementary and Rainier Middle School. And this year, we've already held one on May 4th at Rainier, but there's another one coming up on July 26th at Pioneer Elementary. And those are really popular events, a lot of people come in and we enjoy putting those on. And thank you for reminding me, we do that. And that's it, in a nutshell, um, I, I would say the, the only other thing I'd add that I didn't really put in here is we also have a recycle, all, recycling all-star program, excuse me, where businesses and residents can sign up and take a pledge. And then, uh, we enter them in drawings, if, and especially if they've shown improvement. And we give away pizza parties to a business and to multifamily, and for residents, we give away to five people every year, um, free service. So, just wanted to touch on that, too. And I, I wanted to introduce Han, I know you did in the beginning, and Han is, is my gal here. She's gonna take over all of my work, she's been with the company about four and a half years, and she lives close by in Kent. And she's done a fabulous job up north, and so I'm really happy that you will have just a delightful person to come in and pick up where I left off. So, that's all I have. I don't know if you have any questions, or?
Councilmember Baldwin.
Uh, yeah, I remember last year when you were showing the waste streams that we had in Auburn, that your guys' team had clearly identified that the multifamily and commercial had arguably the biggest opportunity for trying to get in with recycling. And for some reason, I might be misremembering this, I had thought that the intern program that you were using with the multifamily, that you had a similar program with commercial. I, I felt like there was something you were doing with commercial.
We alternate years, so like this year, the interns are gonna go out to commercial businesses, primarily ones who produce a lot of food waste because of the organics management law that passed, so we're gonna work in, and educating businesses on the requirements of that law.
Okay, great. Yeah, and our summer interns will do that work, um, in conne- in conjunction with planning with the city. Okay.
Councilwoman Tracy Taylor.
I, I was gonna speak on the same thing Kate was, uh, just mentioning, too. It's really concerning to see the commercial numbers down on the food, the food and yard waste, especially considering that we do have a lot of, um, food businesses here in Auburn. Is there a way that we can, like, you mentioned that we're gonna do the interns sending them out, is there a way that we could do like an incentivized program for that, so?
One thing I wanna say about the numbers is that it doesn't include open market. So like Safeway Distribution Center on the south end of town, they use a different company that takes their food waste. And Cedar Grove Composting works directly with businesses. So these are only the numbers of waste management customers, so it is higher than what it looks like. Um, we could, we have done before where we've gone out and worked with businesses and we've bought, uh, the materials, like the Slim Jims for in the thing, we haven't been able to, we haven't gone to the level of paying for service, but we've got, produced all the supplies. Um, so we periodically, and the education, um, so we do, we do, um, put those efforts out there.
And, and I will just add to that, because I was writing all the numbers out, um, but in the commercial, they actually increased, um, from 2023 to 2024. So it went from a hundred and eighty-two tons to two-hundred-and-sixty-nine tons, just in the commercial line of business, which I, I was really shocked by, but it's great. And I think some of that is the efforts, you know, that the city does and the education that we've also been putting out there to make people aware and, and like Joan said, the, the law, the new law about organics, so. Multifamily was up in the food plus yard waste, as was residential. So all three of those, what we call lines of business, had increased year over year for, uh, food and yard waste.
In multifamily, the struggle is space, so usually they can barely make enough space for a recycled container, let alone food compost.
Yeah, it's, there, it's always a challenge, space, whether it's multifamily or commercial, it's trying to figure out what'll fit where, how can the truck access it? Is it accessible to the people that live there or work there? So that's part of the work that the interns do when they go out and do audits, not only looking in containers to see what's there, but they try to figure out all that other stuff, too.
Councilmember Trump Mello.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Riggs. Um, I have a, a comment and also a, um, ask, a question. Uh, here, within the past two weeks, have you changed your routing time? Because we have been getting our pickup a lot later, and I've been having our, uh, my resident, you know, my neighborhood complaining to me, uh, why are they coming a little, quite a bit late, so?
The drivers like to change their sequencing, the way they run their route every once in a while, because if you run the same route two-hundred times, you kind of get, uh, cored. And so they need different challenges, so they'll reroute their route. Or if a neighborhood makes sense to do it earlier in the day, or it could be traffic, there could be a lot of reasons why they change it.
Okay, well, I live up on the Muckleshoot Hill, so sometimes depending on the day, we have traffic up there, so. But I, they just asked me to ask, so that's why I asked the question.
And I would say, too, sometimes you have a, a driver who calls out sick or is on vacation, and so then you have a, a fill-in driver who may then run the route totally different, so. Sometimes those things come into play, but I think for the most part, they're pretty consistent, timing.
They have been, it's just this past two weeks we've, they've noticed, and so I could all ask, so.
Yeah, and your service stays on Monday, so we get our, most of our calls come on Monday, or a half a day.
Weird, I'll figure.
Thank you. And Laura, you're gonna be missed, thank you for your thirty years of service.
I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed.
Love the partnership. We've had, but gonna miss you, thank you.
Mayor Nancy Pelosi. Oh, no, no, go ahead.
So Laura, I do wanna say thank you for your years of service for the city of Auburn and, as well as with Waste Management, but acknowledging as well that any regional event, you have always been there. You have, you have always had a kind word, you always come with a smile on your face, willingness to answer questions. And Han, I wish you the very best. Uh, we are going to miss Laura, and I am going to miss you personally, I consider you a friend, and I just want you to know how much I appreciate it, how much we in the city of Auburn appreciate your level of detail and service that you have provided, and wish you every happiness as you move closer to, to son and grandbaby.
Thank you, Nancy. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss it here, no.
Any other questions?
I just have one question.
Councilmember Lisa Sturgis.
Uh, from a, a bin standpoint, so for multifamily, just from my learning, um, standpoint, so having the three bins at my house forces me to then put things in it, 'cause I don't wanna get fined. And, uh, my daughter wishes I was a, a better human and would do it because it's great for the environment, and I do want to. It's just a lot of work, and so I'm learning. Um, but, so I'm thinking about, I'm teasing, but, um, it, you know, I do have the three bins, and so from a multi-point, you said, lack of space for the bins, is there, um, just a, is there like innovation at a national level of like how we rethink what these bins look like for apartment buildings and stuff like that? I just, um, I'm just curious of what's kind of on the horizon there, or if there, I'm sure there is, obviously, but.
I just wanted you to leap forward.
Oh, sorry, uh.
Get on camera, get on camera.
Yeah, so th- there is stuff that comes down, but for the multifamilies that we deal with in the city of Auburn, it is space. Um, so like Coppergate down at the, off of 277, um, that's a challenge for us, and it's a space challenge. And also working with these property management companies, because the most property management companies, they only last about six months, and then there's some, so every time an old one goes out, um, we have to retrain the new one. And so it's a process probably twice a year, some people are into it, some people say no. And so it's a challenge for us, and, you know, it's just, it's trying to get the right equipment for these customers. Um, that, that's pretty much what it comes down to, is just the space, really.
Okay.
And it, a hundred percent, the property manager needs to be involved, because if they're not, if they're kind of like, oh yeah, put it in, but then they don't, they don't do anything, it's, it's bound for failure. I mean, it's just bound for failure, and, um, we have other properties that do a great job. But it's just, it's finding that balance, that all, all the pieces come together, and I think it's, people come and go so much. And we have language barriers, which we, you know, try to address also with different, uh, trans-creative materials for different languages. Um, we've tried a lot of things, we do slotted lids on containers, that help reduce contamination. We've got blue for recycle and gray for, you know, garbage, and so all of, all of these different things. Uh, I will say, in my almost thirty years, that I started out doing a lot of multifamily, I visited properties, I tried to get them to sign up for programs, I did a lot of the work, you know, trying to figure out, do you have space? How's the truck gonna access? Educating, and it, it was just, it was a constant hu- full-time job, just focusing on multifamily, and it's just the nature of it. And I think, I think there are certain things that will have to happen, and it could be a requirement at some point, um, that you do it. And then if you don't do it, there's fines, but like right now, we don't, we don't fine anybody. Uh, I know we just started a, a program with residential recycle. Like if a customer has contamination, uh, three different times in a quarter, then, and they haven't shown any improvement, because we're calling those customers to talk about, oh my gosh, don't throw that styrofoam in there, that goes in the garbage. And if they don't show improvement, we will work with Joan and ask to have the cart removed, um, if they just can't do it right. So, it's pretty extreme, but we just. But they have the option to get it back, they have the option to get it back, yes. You have to take a quiz, no.
You just have to sign the pledge.
You sign the pledge, yes.
And I will, I just wanna add about, um, Waste Management does review development plans for us, uh, and so they do make suggestions to, to, on, on plans, they don't always take the suggestions on recommending certain types of compactors and different things for space, so.
That's why you'll be like two blocks over, they line all their stuff outside the building, because when they gave it to me, I said, you can't put everything inside, how are you gonna get that out?
No, I appreciate the education, that is, and I, I was overusing humor, I apologize, I'm working on that. But, um, my, my daughter did teach me the, the why behind it, so now I'm like, oh, rinse and dry, okay.
It's the peanut butter jars.
Yes, yes, and so, but, you know, once you learn the why, you're like, oh, okay, and then you really take the extra effort. But I was curious just of how does that work in a place where you don't have the space, so thank you for that.
Yeah, it's a challenge, I mean.
It's not, we're always trying to crack.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you, Chair, I, I just wanted to, again, kudos, 'cause being a former driver in my previous life, uh, and understanding how to navigate in, in spaces where sometimes that's not driver-friendly, and the fact that you were able to, your team was able to, um, the testament of one good leadership and a good team is when things can go off without a hitch and people don't even know all the stuff that was going on behind the scenes to make that happen. And the fact that, you know, you guys were a team was, um, you know, uh, in good spirit about it, um, especially with a lot of what's going on on the roads and construction and waiting in lines and having to just to flip schedules, weekly, that could change, and so again, kudos to you and your team, 'cause, um, the city would definitely notice if things started piling up, and they'd start getting backed up, so again, just tell your team that, um, we appreciate the, the hard work and being flexible and staying positive about it, and, uh, definitely, uh, wanna let them know that we appreciate the work that they're doing.
Thank you for that, I, I will, uh, lead all launches tomorrow, and that will be our message, thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, um, I've got two other questions, uh, that are kind of top of mind. The first one is, uh, I think in one of our recent years' presentations, there was talk of a new facility being built, uh, that was gonna be kind of a capital investment for Waste Management. And I was curious if we had an update on the progress for that project.
So they rebuilt our CRC, which is in Woodenville, that's a Cascade Recycle Center. And they have done equipment upgrades to JMK, which is in Tacoma, and the material from Auburn goes to Tacoma for processing. So that work has all been completed, and I'm, I, I think, Han, you've been up to the CRC in Woodenville. It was a massive, they totally shut it down for months and months and months, and brought in all, they redid everything in it, so that it will take on, uh, it'll process more material. And then we do have three facilities across the state, so we always like to talk about that, too. We have backup facilities, if something happens at JMK or CRC, they support each other. And then our facility in Spokane, so yeah, that, Spokane had an update also, so yes, all done. Tours available.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember.
Thank you, Deputy Riggs. Did I hear you correctly, you're not gonna pick up for insurance, stuff like that on this, are you still gonna have those pickups?
Total Logistics is our new contractor for illegal dumping. Uh, Waste Management still has the bulky item collection, if you call them, you can get up to four bulky items per year on the date that you choose.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
That still happens for residential.
It's not gonna be a certain date that you're gonna go around picking up?
No, no. That was in the, the whole contract, yeah.
It's all by phone calls, yeah, okay. And it's still the same number that it was before, okay.
And I believe the magazine is gonna have information, the next magazine will have information on it, coming out.
Okay, thank you.
The phone number is two-five-three-nine-three-nine-nine-seven-nine-two. Come, Jason be happy to pick up your furniture.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Uh, thanks, uh, and I think this may be my last question, so again, thank you for all the service you've provided for us, um, over the years. But the last question I have is in that space of trying to incentivize, you know, commercial businesses with how they're addressing, you know, their waste diversion. Uh, I've seen different organizations that take on kind of a operational cost and sustainability approach to their waste management in-house. And so I'm curious, because I know within residential, the more that you can kind of downsize your garbage container and upscale, you know, upsize your compost and recycling, you can actually have cost savings with that, right? And so, you know, looking at the economy going forward and into the next few years, I think there's probably a lot of businesses who are looking for any ways that they can to save money. So is that model, that benefits residential, available as well for commercial? So if there was a business owner saying, hey, how can I save some money every month? Are there people within Waste Management who could, you know, assist with that, give guidance or recommendations?
So we do have, with all commercial businesses, they can have unlimited recycling, the single-stream recycling program like you have at home. Um, and we do have education people, like if somebody calls and wants somebody to come out and help educate and tell us how, how can we do this, yeah, we can set that up, I mean, that is available. Um, and it's also part of what we do, um, every summer when we go commercial multifamily. Like this year with commercial, it's a focus on organics, and some years it's been a focus on recycling and making sure they're doing it right. And do they know it's available? And do they know it's available to them and, and all of that? And we do annual mailings every year to each one, each residential customer, each multifamily customer, right? Property manager and customer and to all the commercial businesses, too, so.
Do you have a range of what the cost savings could be if they were able to?
It just, it depends what, what they're throwing in their garbage and how big their garbage is. So I think there's a lot of businesses right now in the city that are recycling. And they're doing things like cardboard, you know, which you're going to commonly see in a business. And then some paper. Uh, but I think with this, this next go-around focused on organics, there will be recycling questions that come up along with that, too. But it's really recycling all the same things that you can do at your home. And so sometimes they don't know, oh, I can put all my plastic water bottles in there. Or, you know, I can throw all my paper and glass, glass I have. So, and sometimes businesses just don't have that kind of material. So sometimes they might have wood, which isn't part of our single-stream program. And so Joan talked about an open market. So we have, um, like a sales team that would work with that business to help set them up, uh, with wood recycling and whatever that cost is. So, you know, I think all those situations are a little different, but we do have people that can assist.
Okay, I think that's good for our business community to know, so thank you.
Yeah, and to add on that, too. So the drivers take pride in what their customers do. So if a garbage guy's going in there and noticing that the, in the recycle is increasing and the garbage volume is going down, they'll call that in and say, hey, can you up-service the recycling and down-service the garbage? That way the customer, because most commercial customers, they don't know what they're paying and they don't know what their sizes are. So the drivers know that, and so they take care of their customers, so.
And it, that just reminds me, I had a driver come in just last month. Laura, you got to get a hold of this property. I go out there three times a week and their garbage isn't full on whatever day. They are paying for something they don't need, right? So that's an, that's an example of the drivers and paying attention to their customers and service levels.
The same thing happens in residential. If a, if the customer's paying for two cans and the customer's only putting out one every week, the driver notices that, they'll call it in and say, they're only putting one out, please remove the other one.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Got a lot of eyes out there.
I know. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We're really going to miss you. We'll go back a little bit, so.
I know, and I'm, I'm going to miss it here, too. I'll just, I'll leave you with a really, a story I love telling. Once upon a time, the city of Auburn did not have curbside recycling. And there were just public drop sites and people basically threw garbage in them all the time. And we were trying to get rid of all of those because we were bringing in curbside recycling. And it was down to the eleventh hour, these, all those boxes were supposed to be pulled. And I was out, was out with the driver in a rear-load truck, shoveling garbage off the ground into the back of a truck so that we could get all these recycling places cleaned up and pulled. And so I'm, you know, we've come a long way and it's really nice the way it is now. But yes, there's always room for improvement, but, yeah. So thank you. Thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you.
And I, I love all of you. And I've loved working in this community and being a part of it, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor, our next item on the agenda is ordinance sixty-nine seventy-five by Director Thomas.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Council. Um, it is our first budget amendment of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget. So we just got done all, doing all that work, um, in November, adopting the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And we're here now to amend it. We've, we've got four main changes that we are, we've four different types of amendments that we are, uh, bringing to you guys tonight. One is the beginning fund balance true-up, and I'm most excited about this one. Normally, we don't true-up our beginning fund balance, at least historically, until the second budget amendment of the year. We have changed some of our processes in the, in the finance department, which has led us to be able to have that beginning fund balance true-up in the first budget amendment. And what that means is we know what our beginning fund balance is on a cash basis earlier in the year, um, rather than later in the year. And, um, I think that's more meaningful from a financial planning standpoint and knowing what kind of resources that we have available, what cash resources we have available, um, when we're, when we're doing our trend analysis in the finance department and for, for management as well and, and for, for council as well. So you will see in this budget amendment, um, updated fund balances to reflect how we actually ended twenty twenty-four. The second piece is the carryforward of unspent twenty twenty-four budgeted items. So these are for items that, um, for items that, um, were contracts that we had, um, by the end of the year, but we had not completely, um, spent down those contracts. So we need the budget authority in twenty twenty-five, um, to continue with our financial obligations from twenty twenty-four. But they were previously already budgeted in the twenty twenty-four budget. And it's also the reason why we have a beginning fa- but fund balance true-up. Sometimes that fund balance is inflated over our budget, um, budgeted amount because we didn't spend all of our money that we had anticipated spending in, in the previous year. So that carryforward offsets the, um, beginning fund balance adjustment. The third is new programs with new offsetting revenue. This is mostly grants. We have a couple of contributions and sponsorships in there, um, this time around. But most, for the most part, it is new grants. And then we also have a few capital project adjustments as well. So starting off with the general fund, our beginning fund balance true-up is twenty-two million dollars in the positive. Um, this is mostly related to, um, additional revenue that we'd received. We had the, uh, the, the fourth quarter, uh, review a few weeks ago. And we went over all of the different revenue sources that outperformed our budget. So that contributed pretty significantly to that twenty-two million dollar fund balance. But then also the underspend is the other half of the equation, which leads me to number two. And the four point six million dollars in carryforward items for twenty twenty-four, it's a total of nineteen items. That offsets that increased fund balance that we're bringing forward. A lot of that is, um, unspent ARPA programs at three and a half million dollars. And then we also have other grants that total seven hundred and eighteen thousand. So really, a significant portion, four point two million dollars of that four point six million dollars is related to grants that we're carrying forward. And there's offsetting revenue to those expenditures. Uh, the third is, uh, five hundred and eighty thousand in new programs that have new, new revenues. This is actually, we're asking for additional spending authority of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but the net impact is cost neutral. So we've brought in actually more revenue, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Um, we're bringing in more revenue than what we're actually asking for in additional spending authority. And then the fourth item is a little over a million dollars in new programs. There's three items on this list. One of them includes a new limited-term, um, employee. Um, and the three items on this list are one-time, um, in limit, or limited term in ne- um, term in nature. So they're not ongoing new programs. And this is that list. It's a very big list. Um, there's a lot, a lot going on, but really the lion's share is carryforward. So I, I wasn't going to spend much time talking about, um, the carryforwards, except for the second to the last one, which says miscellaneous grants. Um, because I wanted to show the, the total impact there is, um, is a net positive. Um, we are recognizing a revenue that we hadn't yet received in twenty twenty-four, um, that we're due to receive from granting agencies. So we're actually, we need to carry that forward so we can get our revenue. Um, and then moving on to the new items, we've, um, the very first new revenue item is a new grant. It's the COPS grant from the Department of Justice. And we are actually awarded this, uh, before the end of twenty twenty-four. And this helps fund a portion of new officer FTEs, which the council approved for within the, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. It's only about a quarter, it's a, it's a limited grant, it only lasts for three years. And it funds, I think, uh, right around twenty percent of the cost of an officer. And we do have continued funding obligations beyond that three-year term with the grant. But just point, uh, bringing that out, uh, pointing that out, we've already, uh, we already got the expenditure budgeted with the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. But this is just to recognize that revenue and, uh, just recognizing the efforts, calling it out, recognizing the efforts of the, the police department and the efforts that they did in, um, procuring, um, a really important grant, um, for the city. We also have, uh, several other new grants in there. You can see the revenue, what we're budgeting for revenue matches what we're budgeting for expenditures. So there, uh, there's several in there. Um, and then I wanted to talk about the three new programs at the bottom, since this isn't something that, that the council has previously seen. But you will see, not only in the general fund, but in our, in our other funds as well. Um, the recover, the twenty twenty-four facility fund charge. This has to do with our internal service facilities fund and the work that they did in twenty twenty-four. Um, the total amount of capital improvements and maintenance types of things that they had done in twenty twenty-four, uh, exceeded what we had budgeted to actually transfer into that fund. So when we get into twenty twenty-five, they're running into a, um, a fund balance issue. So this is just that fund trying to recover their actual costs from the funds that incurred those costs for them. Uh, we, I, if you recall, in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget creation, we created a new reserve for the facilities fund, um, at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to help account for those larger repairs and maintenance types, item, type of items to help prevent this sort of situation happening in the future. But we will still be keeping a close eye, eye on that facilities fund. Just the repairs and maintenance costs for a lot of our buildings is just getting increasingly expensive. And we need to make sure that the funds that are actually using and, uh, using that work, um, get, the money gets back into the facilities fund. The second item is the Stuck River Road and Rainier Vista Sub area plan. Now, there was a, a comprehensive presentation already to council on this. This is just recognizing the, the revenue that we would be receiving, um, from the developer to help pay for our professional service costs that we will be incurring. And then the last one is, uh, the human services is at, human services department is asking for a limited-term position. It's currently, um, it's an intern position that is being funded with, um, ARPA funds that have now expired. But they would like to continue that peer support specialist position and use our opioid settlement money that the city has been collecting over the last couple of years to pay for that position. So currently, we have a little over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the, uh, opiates, opioid settlement funds that we've been receiving over the last couple of years. And, um, human services is asking to use that, some of that money towards this peer specialist position. So also in the general fund, I mentioned that the ARPA carryforward, since that is such a large number, almost three point five million dollars. I put together a list, it's also in the memo, um, a list of all of those unspent operating ARPA items. Um, not capital ARPA items, but these are the carryforward for our operating items in the general fund. Um, there's a couple of large ones, m- mostly human services. So we have the twenty twenty-four human services grants. This is a carryforward for the twenty twenty-four human services grants that is, relies on ARPA funding. We also have the twenty twenty-five human services grants. That was actually a budget amendment item that we did at the end of twenty twenty-five, planning to use that money for twenty twenty-five. So now we didn't intend to spend it in twenty twenty-four, but just earmarking it. Last year, we're now carrying it forward so it can be spent and, uh, worked out in twenty twenty-five. And then we still also have the one point four million dollars in the emergency housing voucher program for human services as well.
Councilmember Bowden.
Yeah, just a quick question for the emergency housing voucher program. Does that include the clean and sober housing vouchers?
I know that we've been primarily using the, oh. I'll defer to Kent on that. You want to comment?
Yes, those funds are, are, uh, being used for clean and sober housing program. Well, with Ahai and Eliza's.
I thought it did, I was just confirming.
Do we also use the op- opioid settlement money for some of the clean and sober housing as well?
Correct.
Any other questions, Council? Councilmember T.
I want to make sure I understand this. So twenty twenty-four human service, there's five hundred and fifty-four thousand, and then twenty twenty-five, there's five hundred thousand. Can you explain that again?
Sure. So in twenty twenty, well, probably in, in our twenty twenty, uh, when we, um, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget creation, we had set a certain amount aside for the ARPA funding to go towards human services grants in twenty twenty-four. Um, mid twenty twenty-five, we had reallocated, um, through a budget amendment, um, by council. It was for, with some leftover, well, this is actually part of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. We had realized that we had some economic development money that we had, um, that we had unspent. And we knew that as part of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we wanted to increase our human services grants funding by five hundred thousand dollars every year, year. It's something that we've actually been, knowing that it's been important for many years. And it's something that, um, Jason Crumb's predecessor, Jeff Tate, had been asking for, for many years. And so we wanted to convert some of that, um, community development money from the original ARPA list, ARPA list, to be dedicated to, um, human services grants in twenty twenty-five. So we kind of did a switch on the ARPA list to move it from economic development to human services grants. In the future, we're using general fund money to increase that funding for human services grants moving forward. But for that fir- this first year, twenty twenty-five, the transition year, we were going to be using ARPA funding. So we didn't plan to spend it in twenty twenty-four, but we had earmarked it from one project to another through that budget amendment, um, number six. And this is the carryforward effect of that. A lot of words, I apologize.
Any other questions, Council?
Thank you. Okay. I mentioned that this, this three point five million dollars is only for the operating, unspent operating piece of ARPA carryforward. There is another four point four million dollars in unspent ARPA money, and they're tied up into some of our larger capital projects. Our capital projects, um, automatically roll over. Um, so that won't be something that you see in the budget amendment. We have a couple of large projects that contribute to that four point four million dollars that will be automatically rolling forward. And that includes the downtown sidewalk, um, develop, uh, redevelopment, um, between Main and B Street Plaza, and then the neighborhood street light program. There's multiple capital programs. Those are really kind of the two largest ones that will be included in the carryforward. Um, but just to kind of help make that gap, we do have about seven million dollars in ARPA money to still spend, as you may have recalled from our quarter four report. But you're only seeing three point five million dollars here because it does not include the capital projects. So to look, look at all of the other funds, um, this is taking all of our twenty-six other funds, other than the general fund. Um, and the carryforward is eighty point five million dollars, which is offset by carryfords of five point eight million dollars. Uh, we also have new programs with matching revenue of almost four million dollars. And then we have new programs, seven of them, also one-time in nature, uh, for three point five million dollars. And then we have some capital project reallocations. There's three of them, actually is a, put negative there because it's got a positive fund balance effect of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I broke this list into two. So this is the first list. This is, um, all of our governmental funds and our capital project funds. So this excludes our proprietary funds. And I'm going to go through, um, they're listed by fund type, so I sorted them by fund, which will help, which helps correspond to exhibit, exhibits A and B, um, in your agenda packet. Did not group them by type. Um, just to hit a couple of the major ones, the new, um, second one, which is the city parking lot replacement. Um, that is the purchase of, uh, the parking lot property, which is being funded with the money that the city received from Sound Transit last year. So even though it looks like a large hit to our fund balance, we have accounted for that six-plus million dollars already in twenty twenty-four. So that's part of that, that carryforward fund balance that we've seen, um, that, that money is there in, in fund balance. Um, and also carrying forward our, um, the unspent portion of our, our financial system replacement, our ERP project. Again, that was already budgeted, um, just unspent, so we're carrying, um, that forward. Two other new programs, it's the undercover vehicle and the LTAC funding. The undercover vehicle is being paid with forfeiture funds, so the, that money has to be spent on very specific items. This undercover vehicle does, um, apply. Uh, there was, uh, an unfortunate, um, issue over at the police department where several undercover vehicles were, um, hit. And, um, we need a replacement vehicle. Um, the fifteen thousand dollars in offsetting revenue is, is the, uh, is the trade-in value of some of those, uh, some of the vehicles that. of some of those, uh, some of the vehicles that were, um, injured in, in the process. But the forfeiture money, um, need, can only be spent specifically on drug enforcement-related activities. And so that's where that money will be coming from. And then the LTAC funding, um, our hotel motel tax fund has grown a little bit over the last couple of years. We've got a fund balance of about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So the LTAC board has asked to increase its granting authority, um, by twenty-seven thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five. So a request to spend down some of that hotel motel tax fund for LTAC grants. And then I'm gonna move down to the pink highlighted or the purple highlighted lines. And this is to, it, it affects a couple of different funds because we have a capital project that was originally going to rely on some of our mitigation funds to pay for the project. We received a pretty significant grant from, uh, WashDOT. So we are going to re, put some of those, um, unencumber some of those mitigation funds and incre- and increase the, the project itself, the, the total project. The contract for the project will increase and be offset by that, um, WashDOT grant. And then moving now to the, the green highlighted items, which is some of our, some additional capital reallocation. We needed some additional money for the Theater Park Plaza. And we are going to move, not increasing capital, uh, spending from mitigation funds, but just reallocate. So reduce the amount of money that we currently have budgeted, uh, for the Jacobson Tree Farm Park, which was just kind of earmarked with nothing specific really to be done in twenty twenty-five. And then freeing that money up and using it towards the, um, the park plaza. And then using some of the mitigation, some new mitigation money to go towards the, uh, East Main Street demolition project.
Sure. Councilmember Drew Manuel.
When we, um, move money around like that, do we bring it back to the place that we removed the money? Like you just said, you're gonna take some money from the Jacob, uh, Tree Farm?
Yes, so that's what the negative hundred thousand dollars, that's just saying that we, it's a, now we're giving that, we're taking that expenditure authority away from Tree, Jacobson Tree Parks. That puts money into the mitigation fund essentially, but then we're taking it back out for the Theater Park Plaza. So that's why you see a positive hundred thousand and a negative hundred thousand.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Councilmember Bogus?
Uh, this may go back. For the undercover vehicle, what was the incident that caused loss of the existing undercover vehicles?
I'm going to, uh, hand that over to.
Assistant Chief Sam Betts.
Oh, yeah.
The, uh, a citizen was driving through the south parking lot and lost control of their vehicle and collided with multiple vehicles that were stationary at the time and unoccupied.
So moving on to a list of items, um, and these are all of our non-governmental funds. These are all of our proprietary funds and our internal service funds. You'll see there's a couple of items on here that show up a couple of different times. Uh, the utility rate study and the recovering of the facility fund charges. That's because water sewer storm usually splits those costs, um, three ways. So it pops up a couple of different times, once for each of those funds. Uh, so the rate study is for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-eight rate study for our water sewer storm, um, fees. And we're hoping to get underway with that, under, underway with, under, that underway soon. Um, and then the same, the, the twenty twenty-four facility fund charges, overages, that has the, that's the exact same thing that you saw in the general fund. And where you see that money, that additional expenditure authority coming out of the water sewer storm funds here, it actually pops up as a new revenue on, um, the very last item, which is the new program, and that's going into the facilities fund. So we've collected all of that money from all of those other funds as an expenditure, and it acts as a revenue in the facilities fund. So that's why it's on there several times on this list. And then we have, the last one I wanted to point out was the M and O facility improvements. That's a new program. Uh, we are in the, we have budgeted to build out six new bays at the M and O facility um, to accommodate the, the police take-home vehicle expansion program. As a result, we also have to upgrade the electrical, the electrical out at the M and O building. We were relying on a grant from the Department of Commerce. It's a federal pass-through grant, so not being certain of, of the, the federal funds at, at this point and wanting to move forward with the work so we don't get delayed. Pending confirmation on whether we actually, on whether or not we actually receive that grant or not, we are asking to go ahead and use the fund balance for now if we need to go back. And, um, if we need to go back and replenish that, once we do receive the grant money, then we will. But at this point, um, we're expecting not to receive the grant, um, just to be, um, to err on the side of caution. But then also, um, the grant wasn't for quite that much money, but our bids actually came in a little bit higher than what we had originally budgeted. So there's kind of a combination effect in that, in that budget request.
And that, that's the extent of all of the budget requests for, uh, budget amendment number one, and.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Any questions, Council? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. That is the last, uh, agenda on our.
Item on our agenda. So meeting a.